Okay.
We should call the April eighteenth, two thousand and twenty-three Planning Commission meeting to order.
Yes, we should.
This is the first time.
All right, so you're off to a wonderful start.
There you go.
Next up.
So I'm calling the meeting to order at seven oh seven.
All right.
You're sitting in the wrong seat.
No, I'm sitting in my seat. So we can stand for the pledge allegiance. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands a nation under God, in whose will we are ready and just as well. Can we have the roll call, please?
Roll call. Chair Hammond, Vice Chair Stansberry.
Here.
Secretary Fobbs, Commissioner Disick, Commissioner Cantor.
Here.
Commissioner Powell.
Here.
Commissioner Tamorelli.
Present.
Mr. Chair, you have a call.
Do we need a motion to excuse those?
We received a notification from our chair, Mr. Hammond, that his son is being honored by the Junior Honor Society this evening, so he will not be here. And we received the notice from Mark, I keep, let me make sure I get it.
Disick.
Disick.
Yeah.
That he would not be able to make the meeting as well, and Mr. Fobbs is not feeling well, so he will not be here either.
I'll make a motion to excuse Mr. Fobbs, Mr. Hammond, and Mr. Disick from tonight's meeting.
Oops, sorry.
Somebody's at your door, or is that my, they're at my door, because I get that same sound.
I know that's a dog. Second, it's been moved to second, all those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed, hearing none, the motion carries. Everybody has a copy of the agenda? Need a motion to approve the agenda as presented?
I'll make a motion to approve the agenda.
Second.
The move to second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, hearing none, the motion carries. Is there anyone here that did not receive the minutes prior to the meeting this evening that we get electronically? If everybody's had the opportunity to review the minutes, we'll have a motion to approve the minutes from the meeting of March twenty-first.
Motion to approve the minutes from the meeting on March?
I got a question.
Question.
Because I wasn't here. I was attending my Planning Commission Commissioner online training, so I apologize for not being here. Was there discussion about individual items in the capital plan and how they were determined? And I, in reading the minutes, there isn't specific.
At the meeting last month, GIFLs went through kind of by department, but not individual items, just by department and some of the highlighted items within a department, but not, we didn't discuss individual items.
Okay, all right, great, thank you. A second.
Okay. Nothing repeated, okay.
It's been moved to second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, hearing none, the motion carries. We are, we will open up the public comment regarding the agenda for items that are not on the agenda. So if there's anyone here from the public that would like to present regarding something that's not on the agenda, this is the moment.
Well, actually, we don't have the second public comment on there on this agenda, so this is probably a public comment for everything, right?
Well, it could be everything, but we also have our public hearing for the CIP, right? Right, that's how I am interpreting that.
That's how I interpreted it, too. Hearing, seeing no one is here, we'll close that public comment for the agenda and move to new business. New business will be the public hearing for the two thousand and twenty-three to two thousand and twenty-eight Capital Improvement Plan. Turn that over.
Okay, all right, open and close.
Open.
Hey, you are so much faster than me.
I think I'm getting some help.
Perhaps.
All right, we'll close the public hearing for the two thousand and twenty-three, two thousand and twenty-eight Capital Improvement Plan, and we'll move on to old business and table items, which is the two thousand and twenty-three Capital Improvement Plan.
Good evening, Mr. Chair, members of the Planning Commission, it's good to be with you this evening. The Planning Commission considered the draft to the CIP in March, and we did go over general discussions about some of the items and the different departments within the city and the items that they had for the current CIP. And the Planning Commission had asked that we go back and make some revisions and some corrections, mainly just within the document to help better outline the different items, mainly chronological order, the date that the, that the items would be, the fiscal year, excuse me. And so those corrections were made, if you look through, hopefully it'll be easier to read and follow the different items within each department, and then just to provide an asterix for all the new items that are part of this year's CIP. So that was the bulk of the corrections that were made, in addition to some of the discussions that we had last month. And then I think Suzie and I did some checking of the document and came across a few other minor details. But other than that, it's pretty much the same as what was considered last time, so there shouldn't be any new shockers or anything, but be happy to hear your feedback this go around. And then I did talk with our GIS department to determine the steps forward for the dashboard, which is like the digital representation of the CIP. And so once we're able to move forward after this meeting, we'll start to put together that data so that it can be easily accessed by the residents of the community.
Is there any other discussion regarding the CIP?
I'd have two quick questions. Page twenty-five.
Of the CIP document or the?
The packet.
Of the packet, okay, so the DDA stuff?
Yeah.
Okay.
So it says that the very last line, along eastbound and northbound eleven mile, will be replaced, is that a typo, should that be eastbound and westbound? Because eleven mile doesn't go northbound. Yep.
Eleven mile, east and west. Yeah, that should read westbound.
Yeah, and then the other question I have is somebody who rides a bike two hundred and fifty to three hundred miles a week, I don't know what a bike loop is. On page twenty-six? What's a bike loop?
Like, literally, a loop. Like, it's just, it's, they're, well, they're taller.
Oh, to attach your bike to?
A lock. A lock.
Like, like the little bike things, like the Sernow bikes that we put out there for your, got it, okay.
Yeah, except just a loop, but not, not a, no.
Yeah, I was like, what is a bike?
Did you say bike? Well, if you weren't on it all the time, you're parking.
Right, right, if I ever parked, I would know.
Yeah, if you weren't riding your bike, we, we could.
You thought it was a bike roundabout?
I was thinking, I was thinking, are you on a bike path? What, what, what is it?
It's a, it's a new cycling thing.
That's all I have. Are there any other comments regarding?
Yeah, I have a couple of questions. In the, I had it in front of me, Department of Public Services, there are a number of vehicles.
Wait, hold on, one second, what page are you on?
Sorry, page nineteen in the document, twenty-four in the packet.
Okay.
Department of Public Services.
Yep.
The DPS pickup truck, plow-ready.
Yes.
Oh, yeah, above it on page twenty-three, I believe. The backhoe tractor and the dump truck, three items representing roughly two hundred thousand dollars. Thirteen year, the backhoe tractor thirteen years old, dump truck twelve years old, no floor panel. What provisions or investigation has been done? I mean, this, and maybe it's not at this point in the capital improvement plan, I don't know, this appears to show a purchase. Has anybody considered repair? I mean, what's the protocol for saying, let's spend a hundred thousand dollars on a tractor? And I know at one point supposedly we were renting tractors from, who is the group that does our evil?
Eagle Landscaping, we're, yep.
You know, is there someone that is looking at the multitude of ways you can use and own or rent or lease tractors, backhoes, vehicles?
Not, I mean, it's, that would be a function of the city administrator. I'm sure that we would lean quite heavily, at least for Department of Public Services, on the contractors, you know, Sunday Brothers, lean on them for their expertise. I know they spend a lot of time fixing equipment as they can, but, you know, they're essentially our department head, right? So we, you know, Sue would, or the city administrator.
So we don't rent, we don't rent the backhoe from them, we rent it from Eagle?
That is through Eagle Landscaping, yes.
Okay, and is that on a per-use basis? Do we know any of that information?
I mean, I, I only know.
And I don't know, I'm asking, is it germane for this group, for me to ask this as part of this group?
I don't.
Or where does that happen?
I think that's probably a better question to be directed specifically to the city administrator. I mean, I know that we, it's, it seems to be on a use basis, based on the invoices that I get and code through the infrastructure project work. Whether or not there have been discussions between the city administrator and Eagle or any of the other contractors for that matter, I, I'm not privy to those conversations. I know it through, through that invoicing process and, you know, processing those invoices, you know, I provided that information to the city administrator and said, hey, I, I know that, I know what this charge is for, I've asked for an accounting here, here it is, and now, you know, you need to do whatever it is that you need to do with that information. So beyond, beyond that, I'm not sure what, what her conversations may or may not have been.
Yeah, and then eventually that would come to council, and then council would be pushing back to make sure that that's something that we actually need to make the expenditure on.
Okay.
Right.
So we're just here to say it sounds like it makes sense.
Yes.
Move it on, and then council determines.
This is an expenditure that we think, that, you know, belongs in this, in this plan.
In a long-term view, five years of the future.
Okay.
And when we do our budget, you know, we're, you know, we'll, we'll look at this, and, you know, obviously there's way more dollar-wise in here than we could obviously, you know, afford to spend, and so we'll, I think last year I spent, we think we spent like a hundred thousand dollars on capital improvements, and so we'll, we'll debate as to what we, you know, what on the here, you know, we need to spend on and analyze it further.
Okay, all right, that's fine.
And also, just to add to that, too, maybe redundant, but having, oftentimes having stuff in your capital improvement plan is a prerequisite for grant eligibility or other access to other funds.
Right.
I know we had that with the, with the parks, we had a park plan.
Yes.
But there were also some other scenarios where it's been identified that that makes others.
More or less a placeholder, all right, great, thank you.
You said two.
No, that was, three items, one whatever, yeah, that's good.
Got to get back to the agenda.
There's no other questions, we just need a motion to adopt.
The two thousand and twenty-three capital improvement plan.
Adopt and forward, right? Adopt and forward.
I'll make a motion to adopt the two thousand and twenty-three Capital Improvement Plan and move it forward to City Council for approval.
So moved in second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, hearing none, is adopted.
Right.
We'll move on to other matters for discussion.
Well, I passed out to you our development project update. Sorry, I was not able to include it with the packet. As you'll notice, there's a lot of blue on here, and that's a good sign, right? Because those are all the changes, so. So, and we had some of our action last night, but just going through the list, the, that first blue one, logos, bless you. That'll be moved off, moved off the, this particular list, probably next, for next meeting. They have, they obtained their certificate of occupancy, they are going to be working on their landscaping, presumably sometime in the next couple of weeks, bless you. Hopefully we can get our nice warm weather back, so they'll, they're continuing to move forward on that. We also have a small update on Panera, so they, Consumers Energy has actually gone out there, they were out there yesterday morning, and they terminated service. I've been in regular communication with their demolition permit guy over the last couple of weeks, so Consumers has been the first one out there to, to get that service terminated. We're, he was still waiting for DTE, it sounds like that's going to be another couple of weeks, and then in, in between there, we will have the water and sewer cut and capped. So, and in conversations with Sam Sernow last night, it, you know, he's eager to get them, eager to get them moving, too. He's, he was a little concerned with their, their slow start, but they seem to be moving ahead, so, and we've already, I've already talked to you, Jim Nelson, about filming the demolition of the building, so hopefully, I mean, that'll be kind of exciting, right? And I will let you know when that happens. BP, and they're, it's on here twice, once for the ZDA, once for the site plan, they have finally squared away their, their zoning Board of Appeals variance request for signage, and they will be, we're going to have a special ZDA meeting for them on May first, right? So that is, that's specifically for their, the placement of their monument sign placement is the, the biggest part of that. So, May first for that one, but more excited, more exciting, they've got their certificate of occupancy. So it's taken them four and a half-ish years to get that done, but I'm sure no one's more excited than Tarek, so I expect that we will have, I expect we'll see that, that business open just as soon as humanly possible after that ZDA meeting. We did have a couple of ZDA action items yesterday, the first one is on here, Charles Gottson, hello. He was partially denied and partially successful in his variance requests. He is allowed to place, he's allowed to exceed the maximum allowable square footage for accessory structures, but he has to place his new proposed shed in a conforming location, and then he had, we had identified some issues with an existing structure that was there, so he obtained the proper variances for those. So, so this one will be removed next month. We have another variance request for a fence, we are still following up on that, so that one, continue to see that. The other ZDA item that was heard last night was for the event house, and they are going to be an event space seeking to operate in the former No Limits Sports location next to FedEx. They will be coming before you, and those are the other, the last two items, they're town hall investments, they will be coming before you for specialty and use approval in May. And then last but not least, we have a recent application from Michigan First for their annual temporary, or their annual car sale, which is a temporary use, and it won't be coming before you, but they will be, they'll be holding their car sale in early March, or May, I'm sorry, early May. And that sums up our development projects.
Question.
Yeah.
The, the ones that are not blue.
Yes.
Are we in pending litigation still?
Yes, sir.
We are?
Yes.
Just checking. And the, the twenty-seven, two-one-five?
Yeah, the MRI center.
I thought they were done, except, isn't that the MRI?
Yeah, no, they're not done.
He still has.
But I thought they were in there, and I, I thought we had gone through that they had done some, they had done a bunch of stuff.
They've done a bunch of work on the inside, he still has a bunch of exterior work that has not been done, that needs to actually be. Do you, do you know where Ramil is with that one?
Last, I heard he was waiting for DTE to approve his, because I guess you need some special extra electrical for, to run the MRI, and so that's the last I heard, that he was waiting for that. But then it just kind of fell off, maybe haven't heard anything after that since, you know, in a while, it's been a long time.
Yeah, so it said, March of twenty-one, I mean, I remember it started back then, but some outside work had been done, and the fence, is it the fence?
Fence.
Fence went up, and, you know, you can tell that there was stuff being done, and then all of a sudden.
It's just north of you.
It's like, I can see it from my, from the.
Across the street, right?
Yeah, yeah.
So I was just wondering if, if he had, if he's gotten his new permits, or he's still waiting to, for DTE to get the permit, no reason to get a permit if you don't have DTE yet, I guess.
I will, I will look into that some more and see, see if I can get a status update from Mr. Yusevav.
Obviously, there's no update, we're still in litigation, so.
No, there's not, I, I think that we're, I don't, do you remember the, the dates for any of that? I think we were still looking at fall for any more action.
Those are, those are very tentative.
Yeah. So.
So while, while we're litigating, they still function like it's no big deal?
That's part, I'm not handling the litigation, we, our city's liability carrier is, because they have asked for monetary damages, so. But basically, yeah, one of the things they had asked for was a stay of enforcement against the properties, which the court didn't grant them. We can, we can continue to regulate them, and we have, as we would any other business, but as far as the underlying issues here, the site plan and the parking lot improvements, we can't compel them to do it because they're contesting whether or not we have the ability or the authority to do that, in essence, and until that issue is resolved, that issue and a number of other issues, there's a number of other issues that are part of, part of, part of that litigation, but the goal is to have some sort of a resolution versus a court, a decision by a court, so. But it's been, I'm trying to remember the last update, it's been probably, I haven't given her anything since January from council.
I was gonna say, it's a couple months, like I was.
They, they were entertaining some sort of settlement discussions or attempting to conduct some settlement discussions, I don't think that really materialized.
I don't think that that will work anymore. Still waiting.
They take up the first four.
I know, I know, maybe I'm walking down.
They're moving on to the next one.
Right, reorder them, put the new stuff up top, that makes, you know what, that makes great sense, flip it around. I got the header this time, so I'm putting myself on that.
Well, thank you very much for the report and the update. Do we have anything for general communication?
I have nothing unless we all have things that you'd like to share.
Update from the council meeting yesterday.
All right.
The, the school, talk a little bit about that.
Do you want to talk about it, or do you want me to?
I can talk about it, and then you can correct me when I make mistakes.
All right. Gladly.
So, so, sir, as Suzie said earlier, Sernow was at the study session last night and, and came, you know, he's been diligently working on trying to develop the anti-school, any life of school property, and the, the one issue that he's, he's run into is, you know, from his perspective, in order to make it profitable, he needs to have a certain number of units, you know, family, family units in there, and.
I'm sorry, what's the, what's the project, then?
Well, he, he, he wants to, he wants to save the, the historic part of the building and then build a, that makes use, what's, I'm blanking on the term.
Multi-family.
Multi-family, thank you, a multi-family development.
Okay.
In there, and in order to have the number of units that he feels he needs to make it profitable at the rate that he can lease them out, or, you know, lease them out at, he needs the, essentially the green space that's behind the building. And the issue with the green space behind the building is that's, that's been given to the city from the South Public School System, and it has some restrictions on the deed that wouldn't allow him to do that, so.
Okay.
He wants to work, try to work with the SPS to try to get those deed restrictions, you know, changed, and if he's successful in doing that, he wanted to know whether or not council was, was amenable to allowing him to, you know, work out an arrangement to allow him to build on that green space.
Gotcha.
So we asked the two, the two parties to work on an agreement, and so, you know, Scott and, and Sernow's attorneys will be working on some type of agreement, you know, because he, he doesn't want to spend the money necessary to, you know, to do all that he needs to do, and then turn around and find out that, you know, we're going to say no, that he can't build on the property, so, so they're going to work on an agreement, and then council would then have to approve that agreement.
So an agreement that would allow for him to?
Yeah.
Possibly build on it?
Possibly build on it, yeah.
Would it be all the way back to the bush line, or would it be, you know, there would be a setback like any place else? You know, behind the green, in all the green spaces, a bunch of bushes, you know, and then there's houses right behind it.
Right.
So would he be building all the way to the bush?
He would still have to meet.
Well, he'd still have to meet the same.
He'd still have to meet the standards.
Yeah, it's just the issue that he doesn't have enough, he doesn't have enough space to do a multi, a feasible multi-family development if he has to stop short of that green space.
Gotcha.
So. And that, was it, did I miss anything?
No, I think that's a solid summary.
One more question. Has, is, would council be requiring him to show proof that he has the ability to do this prior to approving it?
Well, he'd have to submit a.
Financial qualification, or just?
Financially, that, it's a, it's a goal project.
I think.
Not an approval where, I need you to say, yes, we can do it, and then I'm going to go out and get the funding to do it.
I, I, I think that that would be something that we would want to work into any agreement that we have with them, is some assurances.
There's a lot of things I think you would want in any agreement, since you started with Sernow.
Yeah.
My, and then my concern was, I was, you know, just as we're talking about it, was that he's looking, obviously, for something more formal, more of a commitment from the city to transfer that property to him so that he can facilitate this development. I was pushing for more of an informal, you know, in previous development ideas or proposals that have come to the city with respect to that property, you know, that we've, we've entered into memorandums of understanding or agreements to cooperate or not be an impediment to the development process. I'm looking for something more along those lines, so that'll be, from the city's perspective, what, you know, we're hoping to achieve, because you're right, there's a lot of things that.
Would, would the city also be trying to get something for the property since it was deeded to the city?
That's part of.
The city doesn't intend to just give it away.
Right, that's part of what we have to.
That was the other part of the discussion, because I think there's a, there's a little bit of a disconnect there, right? The development itself, while it is great and a benefit to the city, in and of itself, I think the city would be looking for, justified, would be looking for something more.
Where is it located? Eagle Lethar Park, right behind the school.
Directly next door, behind the, the.
Yep, okay.
I think our dog park is there.
Our dog park is right there.
Or was there, I don't know if it's still a dog park.
It is, it just hasn't been, there's nobody leading it.
Dog park, pickle, pickleball courts.
Yeah.
Exactly. It's been a lot of things.
Yeah.
So, so the land goes all the way to that end? It goes all the way to that sidewalk here?
Yes, yes.
It's not just the?
Well, no, not quite, it's, it's like a key shape.
Like a big owl kind of.
Kind of key. It does not include, it go, it does not include, it does not include the pickleball or, do you have that one?
No, it's my, it's Bruce drawing.
Yes, that's.
I mean, when you, if you walk back there, you can.
Caution, drawing not to scale.
But it does include the little tennis court area or the, but it does include the dog park area.
It does include both, yeah, it kind of.
Oh, it does include both.
Yeah, like Bruce, hold your representation back up. Yeah, like Bruce, hold your representation back up.
Yes, yep, just like that, just like that. Boy, this is...
This way. So the school's here, the pickleball court's here, the tennis court, so it would kind of come down.
Okay. It doesn't include the little planting area that, it doesn't come that far down?
No, that's the children's garden is on the other side.
Once you cross the sidewalk, it's not part of that property.
Correct.
That sidewalk that goes along there.
Correct.
But the sidewalk is pretty much kind of the property line. Right there.
Yes.
Yeah, because that sidewalk would be the northern sidewalk for what was Sunset Boulevard that was planted through there, so.
Okay.
Right, yeah, so, yeah.
Do you know what type of multi-family housing? Is it market rate, affordable, mixed use?
I, I think it's probably going to be market rate.
Okay.
But again, don't forget, this is extremely preliminary.
I'm just curious if he presented some.
I, I'm sure that, you know, we, I know that there's plenty of misdeeds funds out there right now. I mean, they're practically begging to give away money, right? I think that it will behoove Sernow Company to explore all of their options in terms of, you know, is it going to exclusively be market rate? Are you going to mix in some affordability in there, really making sure that you're hitting that missing middle component? So.
And there was some talk about that last night.
There, there's going to be a lot of conversations, and I'm going to work hard to try and get Sam to say yes to some really good things, so.
That the city has the opportunity to say no?
Mm-hmm, yeah.
Gotcha. We keep starting with Sernow, so I just want to make sure I understand.
Yes.
We can always say no.
Yes, we can always say no.
Gotcha.
Well, as it stands right now, it's the Southwood Public Schools that's saying no.
Right.
That's the current impediment to the kickoff.
But if the Southwood Public Schools change the deed, they still deeded it to the city, right?
It's still ours, yeah.
So even if they say, yeah, we're willing to change the deed restrictions, the city still has to be willing to give it up?
Yes.
So we can still say no?
Yes.
Just make sure.
Or maybe tweak your plan.
That's a polite no.
Well, you know.
We'll say no unless you tweak the plan. I understand. And then there'll be a rendering and everything.
Oh, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, I mean, it'll come through this body multiple times, I'm sure.
Through here?
Because it's a special land use, so you would see it for special land use and site plan, and then council would see it for, and because it's a housing development, the main, no, site plan would be approved and...
I mean, they're going to have to come before all boards, really. I mean, they'd have to come before the DDA for, if they, if they want to move forward with incentives, they have to come through the DDA to get approval on those, and, you know, all the different processes here too.
How, how large is the space, the key?
Uh, the key?
About an, I want to say it's about an acre.
And then the whole site, including that, would be how much?
Six, I think. I think, I think he said that he needed about six acres to do...
I was going to say closer to four, but...
And then he didn't have it without the, without the key, without the green space. I thought that's what he said.
Possibly. Let's say four to six acres, or four to six acres. Somewhere in there.
From the mayor's, state of the city, the property in the woods got sold?
Yes.
I, I missed that part somewhere.
Yeah, so one of the, one of the residents on the circle purchased it and is keeping it as green space.
Oh, okay.
That's nice.
No other updates for me unless you, any other questions?
Any other?
I just have one, one other question. So I've brought this up several times over the last three or four years, and noticed again last night, the ZBA form and the site plan, you know, we talked about putting on the signature line that by signing it that they're allowing the, the ZBA board members and the planning commissioners to be on the property to look. I didn't see that on the application for...
Changed it, I swear, it changed it.
Yeah, because when, because when I went out there, I wanted to walk on the property, but I was like, no. So I grabbed my binoculars, which was probably even more suspicious, standing there like this. I'm surprised somebody didn't call the police, but, but, yeah, so I didn't want to walk on the property.
I swear it changed it. I'll check it out. Maybe I just, were you on, did you, were you on the website?
No, I was looking at the forms in our packet.
On the forms in the packet.
Unless I missed it in the packet, I didn't see it. I just looked near the signature, and maybe it was higher up or something.
I swear it, I will, I will double check.
All right, thanks.
Because I swear it did, but...
Found a letter from the right.
Thank you.
If there's nothing else under general communications, we can accept a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn?
Second.
We are adjourned.
You are so much faster.
The gavel.